August 12th, 2025. If we could, Mr. Storm, would you call a meeting to order, please?
Ms. Leest.
Here.
Mrs. Sweet.
Here.
Mr. Bear.
Here.
Mr. Whitaker.
Here.
Mr. DeVoli.
Here.
Mr. Hannah.
Here. Mayor Howard is out this evening, and as council president, I step into his position as president pro temp and will be acting on his behalf. So with that, I'd call a meeting to order, and if you'd stand with me and pledge allegiance, I would appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any additions to our agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, then I'd have you review the prior minutes of our last meeting, and if they're of approval, I'd entertain a motion to accept those.
I move to accept the minutes from July 22nd, 2025.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Storm?
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Abstain.
Mr. DeVoli.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Storm, do you have your financials this evening, please?
Yes, financial reports, statements, and reconciliation for the month of July have been distributed to everyone. Highlights are your balances in the general fund as of the end of the month, $280,336.77. Street fund, $17,465.53, that continues to be a little bit low. The license fees actually aren't coming in at the same rate that we had hoped. Gas tax is, but we're a little behind on collections on where we thought we would be. So that fund continues to lag a little bit, so we need to keep our eye on it. We have diverted some payroll away from the street fund into the water. Things that we can do because we were paying people 100% out of streets for the entirety of the year when they weren't doing 100% of the work there, so that's allowable.
Okay.
To alleviate that a little bit. Looking at the federal grant, we are now down to only being $50,000 in the hole on that, so we continue to chip away. Police levy sitting at $182,861.79, and water at $419,164.26. Highlight for the month of July is that we did receive our second half real estate and mobile home settlement from the county, and that came in a tick higher than estimated, about 3% more than we thought, so that is good news. Unless there are any questions, I would submit that for your approval.
Okay, and do we have a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the status as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Storm?
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. DeVoli.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Kevin, can we turn the air a little bit higher, please, so we can get a little more circulation? Okay, we do have a presentation this evening, and we're honored to have Sheriff Christopher Clark and Chief Deputy Mark Lane here with us this evening, along with our Lieutenant Jeff Wise, for a presentation, and we're very proud to turn it over to you gentlemen, please.
Well, first of all, I'd like to wish Chief Deputy Mark Lane a very happy birthday. He's 25 today.
Again?
First of all, thanks for the birthday there. I stopped having him a few years ago.
It don't work.
I want to appreciate the council for allowing us to do this today. If we can get Mr. McKee to come up here and stay with us, I'll try not to embarrass him too much.
This is Mr. Todd McKee.
On July 11th, 2025, at 2:14 PM, a severe motor vehicle crash occurred at 814 Spring Lake Circle in Enin. A elderly driver, Bruce Hayne, lost control of his vehicle, which careened into his neighbor's pond at this location, and began to sink. The resident at 814 Spring Lake Circle, Todd McKee, having witnessed his neighbor's crash, ran immediately to assist. Not knowing if Mr. Hayne was injured, not knowing the condition of the vehicle or the surroundings, Mr. McKee, with complete disregard of his own safety, plunged into the water without assistance. Mr. McKee then extricated Mr. Hayne from the submerged vehicle and brought him to safety on the bank. Only after emergency crews arrived, it was determined that Mr. Hayne had completely escaped injury from the crash. From Todd McKee's extraordinary efforts in uncertain conditions and response to assist his neighbor in apparent risk of severe injury or even possible death, Clark County Sheriff's Office, along with the Village of Enin Police, would like to recognize Todd McKee for his exceptional action and life-saving reward. This is just a ticket. That's the ticket for swimming without... So we have a citation for Mr. McKee from the Buckeye State Sheriff's Association. It says, "Be it known that the sheriff, on the recommendation and approval of the award citations committee, awards Mr. Todd McKee for exceptional action and life-saving on July 11th, 2025. This citation recognition of a commendable contribution to the office and the community." Speech.
Just a couple more things. The village wanted to do something for Mr. McKee as well, so the Village of Enin, the Enin Police Department, Clark County Sheriff's Office want to commend Todd McKee for his heroic actions on July 11th, 2025. Mayor Howard, not being present today, wrote up a proclamation. Whereas on July 11th, 2025, an elderly male drove his vehicle into the pond at Spring Lake Condominiums on Spring Lake Drive, Enin, Ohio. Whereas Mr. Todd McKee, a resident of Spring Lake Condominiums, witnessed the accident promptly contacted 911 to report the incident. Whereas Mr. McKee noticed the vehicle was submerged in the pond and entered the water and safely rescued the elderly male from the vehicle. And whereas Mr. McKee's quick thinking and subsequent actions prevented serious injury and possible death to the victim. Now therefore, I, Timothy Howard, mayor of the Village of Enin, on behalf of the Enin Village Council, Enin Police Department, and the citizens of the Enin community, do hereby issue this proclamation regarding recognizing Mr. Todd McKee for risking his own well-being to come to the aid of another endary need.
Thanks again to the council for allowing us to do that.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, members of the audience.
Todd, anybody help carry that stuff home? Thank you on behalf of the village itself. We appreciate what you did.
Drive safe. You don't want neighbors to know.
We'd also like to thank Sheriff Clark and Chief Deputy Lane for their services. They're going to the county right now. We're getting that back on track, and we greatly appreciate your time and services. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, let's move on. We do have some communifications tonight. We need to schedule a public records meeting. Looks like we want to do that August 26th at 5:30, I think is what it said. So if we can go ahead and make proper notice off of that and get that on the books, we appreciate it prior to the next meeting. With that, we move on to staff reports. Kevin, Mr. Seifert, would you like to go ahead with your report?
Thank you, Mr. Hannah, council, residents. The first item is the mayor's court report for July. We had four traffic cases and two other cases, which were zoning citations. Total funds received for the current month was $1,905.98. Year-to-date, $14,665.73. Total remitted to the state, $225. Current month, year-to-date, $1,334. Total remitted to the village, $1,671.98. Year-to-date, $13,283.73, which brings us back to the total dispersed for the current month, $1,905.98. Year-to-date, $14,665.73.
I'll move that we accept the mayor's court report as presented.
Second.
Second.
All righty, Mr. Storm?
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. DeVoli.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leest.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next item on my agenda is a park equipment update. Guys are doing a whale of a job getting this stuff up in a timely manner. We have currently the swings, there's two sets of swings and a merry-go-round that'll go be put in concrete on Thursday, weather permitting naturally, but we've got the holes dug today. We're going to set the items in place tomorrow in concrete on Thursday, and that'll set all weekend and probably Tuesday, I'm assuming. We've got to get the edging around it and the mulch in and stuff like that, but I'm shooting probably for Tuesday to get those two items opened up. After that, we only have one more item to install, and that's the playset. So that would be the only thing to go yet, but it's looking good. It was nice to see a lot of kids playing on the stuff there at National Night Out, so it's going to enhance the park tremendously, so.
Kevin, we've got a lot of people here. I don't know if you can pull up the overhead off of the park itself, but if you can tell them about the grant that we received for that.
We received a nature work grant in the amount of...
Sixty-eight?
Thirty-six thousand dollars for park equipment, so that's where all this is coming from, so.
So you see a lot of new playground equipment down there that was...
It's kind of a mess right now, but we'll get it all, once we get everything done, we'll, you know, get dirt back around everything and grass seed and all that stuff, so. But great addition. I'd like to, you know, thank council as well for, you know, voting to do that stuff, so. Generator at the water treatment plant arrived today. We took the old one out of commission. We were going to pour a new pad for the new one on Thursday as well. That's why we got the truck. We're going to do all that concrete work on Thursday. So we are planning on setting the new generator on the 19th and getting it finally hooked up hopefully that day. Then the company we got it from, Buckeye Power Sales, will have to come back when we fire it up, you know, just for warranty reasons, things like that, so. But that project's been long overdue as well, and it's going pretty good, so. Walk path, the new walk path, I've got five more signs to put up. I don't know if anybody's been walking around there, but I did install some signs.
Yeah, I saw somebody the other day along the creek.
So, you know, signs describing and arrows and things like that, so I kind of counted how many I have left, and I think I've got five left to finish up back up to the front then, so. So hopefully get that one, get those done this week, and then that signage will be done and complete. There's a form, some of you turned it in about the life insurance. If you can get, fill in the highlighted areas and get it back to me as soon as possible, or Christie, then she can get everything typed into the system, and everybody'd be good to go there, so. As Mr. Hannah said, we have public records commission meeting next, before next council meeting on the 26th at 5:30. And we did have a meeting with the Crossroads Connections, Crossroad Community, excuse me, for our zoning code. They did turn a diagnostic report into us, and we went over that with them. Very good. I think this is going to be a well-needed, I know it's well-needed, but it's going to be a much improved zoning code once it's done. It's just amazing what they're doing, so can't compliment them enough. So I'm ready to see the finished product. They're going to come back and give us a sort of a template where we can kind of plug and play by the end of the month, and then we can start doing our thing and holding public meetings, things like that, so. It's moving right along. As long as we keep moving the committee and we'll get everything to council as time goes on and start holding public meetings, it'll move right along, so. I think that's all I have for now.
Any questions, Mr. Seifert? The walk path that we're referring to is at the new area that we bought at Enin Park and directly off of the old Enin Park. If you go back toward the railroad, along that cornfield, and up along the creek of Wardens Ditch, back up to suburban propane, it's about a 1.8 mile walk back through there. Right now, it's kind of hard to see with the tall corn, but unfortunately, we didn't get soybeans this year where you could at least watch the people go around there, but people are starting to use that. It does have a few challenges in it when we're trying to make it a smoother path through there, but the more people realize it's back there, the more use we get out of it, the more we turn that into a park, and the faster everybody enjoys it respectfully.
I do want to thank Christie and Jeff and all the people who helped, the employees that helped with National Night Out. That was a great success. That was a well-think.
Okay. All righty, Lieutenant Wise?
Mr. Hannah, council. We'll start off with our personnel updates. August the 5th, Officer Miranda Perks resigned from the department. Her last day was National Night Out. She wanted to work her last National Night Out for her career here. Officer Amanda Pennywit, we've got up and back into an active status with OPADA and got her signed up for the three-day refresher course that she has to take to get everything back in 100%, but she is able to act as a peace officer with full arrest powers as of now. Vehicle updates, the 2019, or I'm sorry, the 2021 Ford is still at Bowtownson Ford. We got a $2,400 bill on it last week. They're expecting it to be done hopefully here within the next week or so. Not holding my breath. National Night Out, it had an amazing turnout, and I can't thank it, all the officers, the fire department, all the volunteers that came out and helped. We couldn't do it without everybody. I think we had an amazing turnout with the foam party turned out even better than what we thought it would. We want to look at next year, making a dual-section foam party, one for the older kids and the adults, and one kid for the toddlers, so that they're not getting knocked over in the suds. Training updates, we've got, all the officers will be attending the training down at Clark County Park District on the 26th, 27th, and 28th of this month. That will take care of all continuing professional training credits that we need for the year, so everybody will be up to date, and we won't have to worry about that toward the end of the year. Officer Schaefer will be attending a, it's a runoff of the class he took a couple months ago for drug interdiction. So that's coming up at the end of this month. It's a one-day course. Onto the stats, for the month of July, we had 86 total calls, 17 assists with the sheriff's office, seven assists with other agencies, and three assists with fire DMS. We had one miscellaneous misdemeanor arrest, 49 traffic stops, 52 warnings issued, two citations to municipal court, and four citations to mayor's court. Seven reports completed, one being a theft. Two crashes, both of them are non-injury, and one of them was a private property information exchanged. We had 75 details that the officers did throughout the month, and 88 business checks. Also, you'll see that we've done up the spreadsheet for any violation, traffic violations, where they were located at, and whether there were citations or warnings issued for those violations. So we're going to have to make up our decision by the next council meeting, reference the Flock cameras, which unfortunately, we're not getting as much of an influx on them as we would like to have seen, but the decision has to be made by September the 5th, whether we're going to keep the cameras or not. We did get a felony arrest last weekend off of the camera here on Main Street. Not our cameras, but the Flock system tracked a runaway juvenile that stole Mom's car in Hawk Meadows and tracked her to Akron, where we got her in Akron. So they're there. It's definitely a good tool to use, and a lot of arrests and stuff have been made with off the Flock cameras, just not a lot in our area right now, so.
Without divulging the locations, you might enlighten some of the people here about what the Flock actually does.
So what the Flock camera is, it is, and everybody's going to gasp when I say this, they're license plate readers. However, they're not your typical license plate reader that you drive past it and then they get you a ticket in the mail because you're speeding. The cameras only notify any of the law enforcement officers that are on the system if there's warrants, sex offenders, protection orders if they're in place, stolen vehicles, stolen license plates, missing persons, so amber alerts, silver alerts, if they are on the terrorist watch list, and any gang activity, they would notify. So basically, what they do is the cameras, cameras read every license plate that drives past. If any of those conditions are marked on the vehicle, then they send an alert to everybody that's on the system with a picture of the car, a picture of the license plate, and where the camera is located at that captured the vehicle, so.
Which was it, Springboro or somewhere the other day? They got, I think it was Springboro, got notified, it was like the child abduction from Kentucky.
Yeah.
Got tripped, and they found him in like a manhole cover or something hiding, but that's how they...
I mean, it's definitely a good source of information and can benefit everybody because we have access to, well, it's over 7,000 cameras, I think, that's listed right now that I have access to, and that's cameras that are all over the United States. So if we enter a license plate, it will notify us if that license plate hits off any camera anywhere it's at.
Which I would anticipate a little bit more, I mean, hopefully not, but with more traffic going to the school starting next week, we heard from the school about their grant application.
They have not said anything. I haven't heard anything about their safety grant. I know they applied for it, but I don't think they've heard yet as of yet.
No, we'll be due to have that meeting with the school board shortly after the school gets back in session, too. We normally do that on a quarterly basis, so that'll be, of course, a decision will need to be made by then, too.
Will that be before or after the next council meeting?
After.
After.
Yeah, after.
And what is the cost if we...
So the cost of the cameras were $5,000, or $15,000 for the five cameras, so $3,000 apiece, and then it's $15,000 a year for the maintenance on them to keep them up and running. If something goes, the camera goes bad, they come out and fix it at no charge.
It's definitely an asset to law enforcement.
Not a tool.
Not just locally, but across the United States, yes.
Quite a layer of security around the school, too, so that's important. Okay?
Along with, like I say, as long with the cameras, our cameras and the cameras that the township has, I mean, we're very well-covered in this area. The western end of Clark County's got several around, so. And that's about it.
Okay, any other questions?
Thanks for doing the spreadsheet.
Yes, I appreciate it.
And I would like to let you all know that Officer Pennywit is right outside our door out there. She is a veteran from Clark County Sheriff's Office, been there for several years. She is back in the corner, so you might want to say hi to her on the way out. She's a new welcome addition. I'm not sure if Officer Schaefer's out there. He's our other full-time officer, who about two years, two and a half years, if memory serves, I think he's...
Three years.
Three years, okay. So we greatly appreciate his service, and that's Officer Schaefer around the corner back there. So thank you, guys, appreciate what you do. Okay? There you go. Okay, committee reports. At this point, Ms. Sweet?
Oh, okay. We had two meetings. I guess I'll do a separate one on Wednesday, July 30th, a special meeting to discuss personnel, employment, compensation benefits for public employee or official, and because it was executive session, I can only tell you that much, but the minutes still need to be approved, so I'm making a motion to do that.
Second. It depends on how you're treating this. If it's an actual special committee, special meeting of the council, you didn't have a quorum, so...
It was not a council. It was...
It's just a committee meeting.
If it's a committee, then you guys just do that.
Okay, so a committee meeting.
Strictly, the public safety committee.
And it's just the committee members.
Okay.
Which I think maybe we need to redo the title, probably.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
The Public Safety Committee.
Yeah. Breaks the chair on that one. Okay, so do you want me to do the other one, too, or don't you?
Has it got the same title? If it's got the same title, we'll bring it back after it's been amended.
Okay, yeah. Do it after it's been amended. Okay, go.
Excuse us for a clerical error off of that. Any other old business? Any new business this evening? Yes, we do. It's our honor to see that Lieutenant Wise, after retiring from the sheriff's office, came out here to help us out. He has been serving as a six-month probationary police lieutenant position. He has successfully met all the requirements for that position to be termed into a permanent position, and with that, I had asked council to entertain a motion to make this a permanent appointment of Lieutenant Jeff Wise from part-time, or from probationary to permanent, please.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. DeVoli?
Yes.
Mr. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Leest?
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet?
Yes.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, I think we do have one person who, at this point, we have no executive session. Comments from the public, we have one person who wrote down they wanted to talk to council. Kevin, is we have one person? Normally, what happens is if you put your name on the agenda ahead of time, you have five minutes to speak. If you have not, you have three minutes to speak. It looks like we've got a pretty good crowd this evening, so we'll probably be staying pretty close to that, please. About two. Is Vicki Forrest?
I'd like to go second, please.
Go second? Okay, who are you deferring to?
I second that.
Deborah Smith? If you'll state your name, your address, and...
My name is Deborah Smith. I'm from Springfield. I'm a co-founder of Calico TNR. I did send an email to all the council members last night, not just I, but the other co-founders that are here tonight, Jody Baypatton and Phyllis Monroe, and I don't want to take up a lot of your time. I know you're looking into the possibility of TNR implementation and what it all is going to constitute in your village.
Right now, we're looking at a lot of different avenues for a lot of our zoning ordinances. There are some on the books, so this evening, what we'll basically do is listen to you, and when the time comes, then we'll... do is listen to you, and when the time comes, then we'll.
So I have a little handout for you, just something that we do a consent form when we canvass neighborhoods, we have the people sign, because we don't wanna trap on property if we don't have the owner's consent, so I'll leave that stuff with you guys tonight, but just to let you know, we've been around since two thousand eleven, we've worked in Vandelia, Hilliard, Logan County, Urbana, Pleasant Hill, Inglewood, Fairborn, Greenville, Kettering, South Charleston, Springfield, that's just the council meetings. We are central Ohio, so we've trapped all over, we were instrumental in starting nine other TNR groups, in Pickwa, Troy, Tip City, Springfield, Logan County, two in Springfield, sorry, St. Harris and Huber Heights, there's also tons of people that don't have a TNR group, but they have been taught to do it, and they're doing it in their own backyards. You are fortunate to have some of the ladies here that do that for Enin at no cost, so I'm not going to tell you everything about it, you guys have been doing your own research on it, I want to, to let you know that we're here to help you, we will be welcome to come for our work studies, we can petition your constituents, we can do a lot of land, I mean, legwork, and just canvassing your neighborhoods to see how your constituents feel about this program.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna leave this information with you.
Okay, if you could leave your contact information with, with Kevin Cyper, too, then that, that way, okay.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't know if you have any questions at this time, I just wanted to do a really broad overview, 'cause I know there's a lot to dig into with all the laws and everything that's changed since two thousand seventeen.
As I say, we are looking at our ordinances, and in particular, zoning ordinances, we, we had a situation with chickens in that area, so we're, we're very, very familiar with, with some of the problems that are going on there now, and we're attempting to update our own internal policies and ordinances of that nature, meetings will be coming up on that in the future, as, as we get more near a concrete solution to this, and updating all of our ordinances, but for, for now, we'll just listen to you all.
And we can, like I said, we can help you with that, if you have questions on the ordinances as well, since we've had some of these places I've listed to you that have changed ordinances, so it would help us to trap the cats, to stop the population, 'cause that's your best thing to do, instead of just letting them to continue to populate and populate, and the feeding bans, of course, are counterproductive, because can't trap a cat if we can't feed it, it's just not gonna work that way, but in closing, I just wanna say, again, we're here to help you guys, there's no reason for you guys to start from scratch.
I appreciate that.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you.
My turn. Thank you.
In your name and your address, please.
Vicki Forrest, and I live at twenty-ninth and Gale Trail in Enin, Ohio, and I'm grateful to have the opportunity to speak with you all again, I just thought it would be good maybe to provide a bit of an update on what we've been doing since the last time I was here and had the opportunity to talk with you. Several of us are members now of PUPS, which has nothing to do with dogs, but everything to do with cats, it's Pets Uniting People Society for Spay, Neuter, TNR, Pet Education, and Lifeline Cat Rescue for Adoptions, and it works in partnership with PetSmart of Clark County, we're also working with Calico TNR, and we've been working also with Bata Cats of Green County, and we're so grateful for all the help that we're receiving, and what they're doing is partnering with us in our neighborhood to capture neutered and spayed cats and stop the population growth of the cat community in the neighborhood. With their help, and that of the Dayton Humane Society and Enin Veterinary Hospital, this month, another eight cats in our neighborhood group will be spayed and neutered by the end of the month. We're also working to find homes for cats and kittens that can be adopted, and to make sure that the cats in our care are now receiving vaccinations and medicines necessary to prevent and address infections and disease. We're proud of the progress we're making, we're thrilled to have the support and the involvement of the organizations that we have connected with, and we are really excited about the opportunity to do this in our neighborhood, and we hope more neighbors will join in the effort and support these outstanding community organizations that are being so supportive, and that's what I wanted to share.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, from this point on, is anybody else would like to address council? If so, you have three minutes to do such. Yes, ma'am. Miriam. Glad to see you here, dear.
I don't recognize her, but I mean, now. I'm Miriam Lottislaw, I live at fifty-five Coons Drive, Enin, Ohio, four-five-three-two-three, and I wanted to ask if the village had anything to do with the recycling, paper recycling container that used to be by the school, 'cause it's no longer there, and.
Who told me that was overfilled, and, and they were gonna contact the school?
It's gone.
At the old school site? That's, the school district ran that?
Yeah.
The school district was in charge of that?
Yes, somebody was walking, was telling me about that, and they, they were gonna contact the school because it was overflowing, and it was turning into a nuisance, and that's just been about two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Can't remember who it was.
Well, it's gone.
Wonder if they've picked it up to empty it or something, maybe, I don't know.
Uh, I don't know, I've been using that for years, and it's convenient.
Maybe that's why it got overfilled, huh?
Maybe, maybe, and I normally, for other recycling, I use down by the township buildings.
Yeah.
And a friend of mine checked up in Springfield, and they don't have one for paper either now, so I don't know whether they have discontinued collecting paper, or.
Kevin, can you maybe reach out on that, and just double-check to be, be sure, because they have the school, that'd be under their auspices, so we'll, we'll see what they can say, and see if we can't get you taken care of.
Okay, that's my question.
Mr. DeVoli, he's our new council member.
I wanna share a horrific story that just happened two hours ago, I almost was scammed on the telephone, that close, and normally, I, if it says scam, I don't answer, or whatever it says, but this, it said Dayton Power, I think, and it was about changing from my existing company back to the old one, and it, I'm telling you, I almost fell for it, I really almost fell for it.
And that may not have been a scam, 'cause they are, they're calling because of the aggregates, because of prices, because of the prices going up, but I would be very, very cautious about giving them any information on the phone, if you don't.
And do you know what the, wait till you hear this, if you wanted to go back to Ohio Edison, the aggregate costs nine hundred dollars, and the, at first, there was a man I spoke to, and then he transferred me to a woman, and both had pretty heavy accents, and wait till you hear this, at nine hundred dollars, this woman explained how I could go buy gift cards at Target.
Scam.
That's it.
Scam.
That's a clue.
And I couldn't, I couldn't buy one gift card, I had to buy three, three hundred-dollar gift cards.
Yep.
I can't believe, really.
That people fall for it?
If somebody would've told me the story, that I wouldn't have even talked to them, I would've said, no way, but I did, and so I didn't fall for it, and I called both companies, and I just.
I'm glad to hear, that's the first I've heard of that scam, but thank you very much for bringing it to our attention.
I've heard of the gift card scam a lot.
Well, the gift card, yeah, but not the aggregate.
Not the aggregate, because I have heard them calling about the aggregates and making phone calls, but.
And they, they actually threatened me, that if I didn't transfer money by five-thirty today, the utility company would shut my utilities off, and they would be changing meters and wiring tomorrow.
Well, they're probably not gonna shut you off at five-thirty at night, just saying.
You know.
But still, yeah, we're glad you didn't get scammed.
It, it is a frightening, I've heard of other people, but I never would've thought that I would've even been into the pumpkin pie.
We're proud of you, dear, we're proud, proud of you.
Way to stay strong.
So be sure and spread the word out, that this is, you know, and it was both, now the one, one was trying to get me to transfer back to the Ohio Edison, but the phone call, the phone number said Dayton Power.
Yeah.
They can pay to have it say whatever.
I don't use Dayton Power, you know, so.
Okay, don't, don't be a stranger, Miriam, we're glad to see you back in here, ma'am.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Second calling, anybody else? Would that not entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
First, second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you, everybody, appreciate you coming out tonight, thanks for coming in.
Have a great evening, everyone, be safe.